Okay, um, yes, it's six thirty on, um, Thursday, three October, so let's call a meeting to order. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
It's actually Tuesday.
Oh, Tuesday, yeah, I know.
I mean.
No, that's probably appropriate. Oh goodness, I, I, I'm, I'm off to a bad start, go ahead. Brock McDonald.
Here.
Okay, um, Greg Begosin, Andrew Lowe.
Here.
Jeff Schwag.
Here.
Lynn Majet is.
Here.
He, Lynn Majet is present by Zoom.
Yeah, and we have quorum.
And Honora, yes, we do, we just have a quorum, and Honora Schiller, um, is, is not here. Oh, okay, okay, um, then will you please join me in to pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I got that right.
Good job.
Okay, all right, first item is the agenda approval, and I understand there might just be someone that wishes to make an amendment to this, so are there any motions to amend? The agenda is posted.
Yes, I, um, motion that we amend the agenda as posted to include a new item D under new business. That would be resolution twenty-three dash sixteen, ARPA proposal, Forest Hills Club Estates, and that would move the existing item D to item E.
Do I hear a motion to accept as amended, and?
A second to amend.
Okay, ayes, nays?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passed. Uh, minutes, Michelle, I believe has something to add to the minutes, so, um, do I hear a motion to?
Here's what I'd like to amend to the, the minutes that were sent out. I inadvertently, um, talked about Mayor McNamara attending an M and M M L con, uh, um, meeting, and, uh, she, she, it hadn't taken place yet, so I'd like to reject that or retract that, and just say that she planned to attend in September, later in the month, and so that is in your books. I, I, I'm caught it, but not until after the, the other minutes went out, so if we should have a motion.
Is there a motion to accept the, and a second to accept the minutes as amended?
I move to amend the minutes as described by the city administrator and remove the line item as discussed.
And a second?
A second.
And moved and seconded, ayes, nays?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Aye.
Motion passes, minutes are amended.
Thank you.
Okay, remarks, petitions, and complaints, and I think we have a resident here who would like to make a statement. Tom?
At this time?
Yes, please.
All right, um, it's, it's further down the, the list, but we continue to have parking, stopping issues on Forest Hills Ridge, uh, for those of you who might not be familiar, we have six homes in just a little semi-circular, uh, street off of Curz Mill directly south of Parkett High School. And, uh, there's some activity in the morning when parents are dropping kids off, but that seems spaced out, but every afternoon for about fifteen or twenty minutes, we have a multitude of cars generally on both sides of the street that block traffic waiting for their kids to get early released or released and scamper across the road. We've talked about a number of things back many years ago, we talked about gating it to try to prevent that, that's not really practical or affordable, but searching for some other idea, Brock and I have been talking. I mean, for starters, it's no, no parking right now, but it's never really been enforced. In fact, I, I noticed today there's a sign that says, uh, no pedestrian crossing allowed, which that makes no sense to me either, but, so we've, we've got signs there, but nothing happens. So, you know, I guess option one would be to potentially enforce that, but Brock and I talked about another, and, and from a historical perspective, uh, we're a second owner, we've been there twelve years. I was originally told that it was parking on no side, on both sides of the street because the fire department couldn't get the equipment through. Brock and I talked, Brock checked that out, and they had, they came out, they had no objection, so I really don't know the basis of how it started. You know, we do have people that from time to time have gatherings and, you know, there is overnight parking, so I think for myself and, and the residents, we don't mind some parking if it's regulated, so that's where we came up with the potential of allowing parking on one side of the street and no parking on the other, painting it curb yellow, trying to enforce it, um, but it's, it's an increasing problem and an ongoing frustration to all six of the homeowners, so would, would like to discuss it and come up with a plan of attack of some sort. The biggest thing is whatever we decide, we'd like some help enforcing it, and maybe for starters, just having somebody out there from three oh five to three thirty every day telling people what they can and can't do, but it's, we would, we would just like some activity, a decision, and, and some enforcement.
Primarily, it's that, that half hour of three to three thirty.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, in the morning, they drop off, but they drop off at different times, it's just, you know, it's a lot of traffic, but it's no big deal. But in the afternoon, and I took pictures again today, other days, it's a joke, it's like a NASCAR start, but they're generally too aggressive for the whole semi-circuit.
Okay, well, I think, um, we've got an item under unfinished business where Brock's gonna discuss this a little more fully, but thank you. Okay, reports, I believe we have an officer present who could probably provide that for us, Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this month, we had fifty actual radio calls to circulate for people to call for us to respond. We had a hundred and ten self-initiated assignments from the officers. We had four total incidents that required a police report to be written, we had twelve alarms, we had twenty-eight garage doors that were garage door modifications that were left throughout the midnight watch. We had two accidents this month, uh, one of them was very, very minor, it was on the lot of, uh, Marquette, parked car, and somebody came in and tapped the other one, and they wanted a report. The other one was right out here in front of City Hall, it was, was a car waiting to make a left out onto Clarkson, and another car was coming down Clarkson towards Clayton, he was pulling a trailer, and he was going so fast that as he applied his brakes, he was gonna make a right turn into City Hall, and the brakes didn't work very well, and he made that right turn, right into the car that was waiting to make a left turn, and the car that was waiting to make the left turn had a occupant that had a, with a neck injury, but that, that wasn't serious either. We had twenty-eight moving violations this month with eight non-moving violations, and forty-two warnings that were issued for a total of seventy-eight traffic enforcements, we had no arrests, had very few incidents this month that required, uh, police reports, one was an incorrigible juvenile, uh, up on Curz Brook. It, it was just basically a domestic situation where, uh, the child was out of control, caused some damage. Officers were able to, to, to kind of bring that under control quite a little bit, and they were, actually could be taking the, the child to mental health treatment the next day, so. Uh, and we, of course, were spending additional time up in Dunhill regarding the traffic surveillance. At Marquette, we had two students that got into a pushing-shoving match, and the, uh, the SRO intervened in that, the school resource officer intervened in that, and, uh, they're, in addition to us sending it to the juvenile detective for further, further follow-up, the school was pursuing the normal channels of discipline for those kids. And just of note, there's nothing that presses you this, this time around, just of note, we had another pretty good fight at Marquette today, and so the same thing happened, and, and we had to, we had to pull the, the student off of another student, and, and, you know, for just, it's a, it's a little situation where, where certain factions are thinking that they're not being respected by other students, and that's saying, you know, the fight's on, so.
Does your, I have to ask, does your hall monitor facilitate any of, any help to you guys?
The hall monitors that are there?
Yeah.
I don't know, I have to check with the school resource officer to see if they.
Just curious.
What they can tell me.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know, I mean, I've, I don't know what they've instructed the hall monitors to do, it just depends.
I know one of them would probably be, um, able to assist significantly if given the opportunity and allowed or requested, invited. Okay, all right, personal phones, thanks.
I see.
Okay, uh, my turn. We have, I've got a whole bunch of little things to name, um, we've made a lot of, a lot of progress with the ARPA distribution. Brock and Jeff will address that a little later on, um, it's been a lot of work, and it, part of me understands why Mayor Douglas did not want to run again, because this, this is, uh, it's like herding cats. Jeff and Andrew have gone after a longstanding problem Curz Mill Estates has had with a number of residents along the MSD sewer line, and an odor that is just really noxious, so hopefully they can deter, determine a problem and a solution to that. And then Andrea and Brock will begin teaching both Michelle and Andrea, especially Andrea, because I'm going to ask her to take, uh, take the lead on that, but that will give Andrea, Michelle, and Brock, and Andrew the ability to set up the live stream, so in the absence of one or two of you, we still have, uh, still have a way to get us up and going. One of the other things, the next thing, since we are beginning now to see an end to, sort of, to the setting up and transitioning in computer systems, we are going to, I've asked Andrew and Brock and David Grable, who's not here tonight, to begin sourcing some, um, vendors who might take over our web management so that we can utilize Brock in other ways and not leave him saddled for the rest of his life as a computer person. So hopefully we'll get some information on that in the next couple of months. Lynn is pricing, um, liability insurance for our building inspector, we've got, um, workman's comp settled. If we get liability insurance, I think, um, all the gentleman needs to step into that role is some shirts and a lanyard with his name on it, maybe, maybe some business cards, and we'll be in business. So I spoke with him the other day to assure him that we were still working in that direction, and apologize for the delay, but it is what it is. As Michelle mentioned, I did attend the, uh, M M L conference in Kansas City, it was, it was great. It was a three-day conference, three and a half days, started on Sunday evening, Monday, Tuesday, and half-day Wednesday. I had the opportunity to interact with Laura Arnold of Webster, who's Mayor of Webster, and Kate Hatful, Hatfield of Frontenac, and she's already given me some good tips and information and direction on how to handle one of our, um, more annoying residents in Dunhill, who actually happens to live in Frontenac, and I told her a little bit about what was going on, and she was appalled. So we turned that over to, um, Tom Engemeyer, and he has, I believe, issued a letter, I saw a draft, and I believe that letter is either in the mail, or they may have received it.
Can I give you an update, I, I didn't have time to update you?
Please, go ahead.
Yeah, he came in today, and he had the letter, yes.
The resident?
The resident, yeah, yes. So he had the letter in hand, and he wanted to know.
Well, I guess that means it was mailed, so.
Yes, yeah, and he just wanted to know the requirements for, um, applying for that building permit application.
Okay.
So he's on it, but it took that.
Yeah, yeah, this house is, has been problematic for Dunhill for a number of years. So we did, uh, Michelle and I set up to, um, try to go to the Frontenac Township meeting, but unfortunately, we were unaware that they had rescheduled it for a different night, so we weren't able to attend that night, but we're still gonna try. We did, though, attend the biennial trustee meeting for Chesterfield, which they have every other year, and they had quite a turnout of their trustees, but, uh, they have two hundred subdivisions, so they have a few more than we do, and it's not a surprise that they had a good turnout. But it was good, it was interesting, we, we heard some, some good advice. We also went to, Michelle and I also went to the Ball One Safety Roundtable meeting, which was held at the Ball One Golf Club. We had some real interesting, uh, information that we got from the seven precincts, police precincts that were represented there, and four fire departments, got some good information about, from them, and specifically about the, um, flock cameras, which I found to be really interesting, more about that in a minute. And the recodification just came in, we turned that over early this spring, and it just came in, so we will begin working on that this next week or two, and Honora, I asked you earlier on if you would be willing to help with that, and I believe you said yes? Yeah, I, I thought it was gonna be later in the year, but. Yeah, well, they, yeah, that's what they said toward the end of the year, but it's here now, we got a bonus, so, okay, well, we'll be, we'll figure out when, when we can start doing that. Then, uh, we received a notice of, an ordinance that Chesterfield requires, it's an increase, it's gonna be about a hundred dollars a year. Michelle, you can fill in a little more information about that.
Right, it was just, it's, it runs on the C P I, it's for the court services, started out at thirty-five hundred, but, you know, the C P I increases, and so it's only two point three, I think, or two point four percent this year, and it's just under a hundred dollars, um, increase. And it's, we have to do it, so that'll be either November or December, whatever Mayor McNamara would like.
Yeah, don't have a whole lot of choices there, but that's what it is. Okay, I guess the, the one thing I wanted to add, I, I, at the end of this, was, you know, I'm a proponent of the flock cameras, because, as I mentioned, one of the, um, at the Ball One Safety Roundtable, as I said, there were four, there were seven police precincts represented, seven police departments represented, and four of them were very enthusiastic supporters of the efficacy of the flock cameras, however, they are not free, they do, uh, cost some money, so to that end, I asked Andrea if she would do some research and identify the placements of all the municipal cameras owned out in our, our area, and she put together a really good map that identifies where they're all located, they all point in one direction or another, so it's not like it's a three sixty view, these cameras don't provide a three sixty view, but they have been very effective in identifying license plates, vehicles, and ultimately drivers, I hope, but, uh, the really good news was we found out today that there are cameras, which we were unaware of, at Curz Mill and Clarkson, Wilson and Curz, Wilson and Clarkson, and there is another one at Stricker and Curz Mill. So essentially, we're off the hook financially, so we're, 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 our, our gates are closed, but we, uh, we get to do that for free. So that's my little piece of good news here. So anyway, um, if you gentlemen and ma'am will be, would be interested in giving automatic reports at this time?
I don't have anything.
Jeff?
I don't have anything really either.
You wanna talk, you and, uh, you wanna talk about the, you and Andrew, wanna talk about the sewer issue?
Sure, Andrew and I met Mrs. Chesky at her house, walked her property, um, trying to figure out where the smell's coming from. She also reported that one of her sinkholes, one of the amount sinkholes, but a, um, the, the manhole covers were sinking. We didn't necessarily see all that, but we did, we do notice that there is a smell, just, it's out there, it's not totally that smell, but it is out there, so we were, we found a, uh, a map, an MSD map showing all the sewer lines within our subdivision.
Wow, where'd you find that?
Talley had a copy of that.
Yay.
H R A president, so that does help us, now we need to go back to MSD and see what they can do for it.
Okay, Andrew, how many homes were affected by this sewer line, do you recall? I don't.
Well, the sewer line itself is, I mean, it touches many, many yards and backyards, but the number of families that have complained so far is four, and they are all along the same line.
Okay, so, um, next steps, you think?
Uh, you have to get back with MSD.
Okay. You guys plan to do that this month, maybe?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, cool, awesome. All right, um, Brock?
Uh, nothing specific to my ward, but with your permission, I'd like, just since we're voting on so many things ARPA tonight, I have some figures that I could share before we get to those resolutions, I mean, they're not really aldermanic updates, but.
No, well, that falls under that criteria, so go ahead.
Okay, um, well, so far, obviously, we've obligated a hundred and one thousand dollars, um, we've distributed some money as well, and those checks have been cashed, but, uh, prior to all the voting tonight, um, it's on the agenda, we have three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars, um, available to the subdivisions. Uh, on the agenda for votes tonight are, is two hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars, so, provided all of the resolutions we're gonna vote on pass, that would leave us with a hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars remaining for, uh, the last four subdivisions that we still.
What was that, Brock?
The last figure, uh, one hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one.
Okay.
For the, and that would be, uh, let's see, for the four subdivisions that we don't have resolutions for as of yet, for one reason or another.
Okay, well, one question, I know we're still, we're still sort of sitting out there on, a couple of folks that, I, you know, Val's here. I believe you guys got. I believe you guys got your stuff in. Did you ever hear from any of the other subdivisions that are kinda hanging out there?
Jeff had, you, who, I'm sorry, there was a subdivision that you had-
I was speaking to Curz Mill Glen, but never heard anything back.
Never heard back from them, yeah.
That's wrong.
So I can assume their allocated amount would go back in the pot.
Yeah, and we just have, I guess the ARPA committee would need to just discuss how that, it's only four thousand dollars, that's their allocation, but how much, how that would get reallocated, or if it would just go back into City Hall, technology improvements, or other municipal uses, so. A couple of different vectors we could take.
That would be easily consumed, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Jeff, I didn't, or Andrea, I didn't mean to jump over you there, but do you have anything else to add?
No.
Okay, cool. So, Patrick, it's your turn.
I have nothing to report. Happy to say so.
Whoa, awesome.
Madam Mayor, I think we had one more alderman who might.
Did you wanna hit Lynn?
Oh, Lynn, I'm so sorry. Wait a minute, I can't touch your-
Well, the only thing I want to report on was I've been trying to contact David Clayton and Gray Insurance and get the liability and cyber insurance issues.
Hang on, hang on Lynn, we're gonna turn you, see if we can get you closer to the microphone there. Okay.
You hear me? Hi, yeah, I've been trying to get hold of David Clayton to talk about the liability insurance issue and cyber insurance issues, so that we can see what additional coverage we may or may not need. And he's been a little slow getting back, but I'm still trying to get in touch with him to talk with him.
Okay, cool.
So we'll get, within the next day or so.
All right, and that's, yeah, that's something I forgot to mention. I, we asked Lynn if he would also look for, look at cyber insurance, especially, I guess, last couple of weeks. The police departments in the St. Louis, part of the, some of the St. Louis metro area all had their computer systems hacked, and I think they were down for the better part of a weekend. I don't know what that cost them.
Three days.
Okay, I don't know what that cost them.
There were computers, there were boarding computers, and everything.
So that, you know, cyber insurance is maybe not a bad thing for us to have.
Was that a ransomware attack?
Yeah, the FBI was looking into it. They took out St. Louis County, it was, we're all connected St. Louis County, so when that went down, then it went down, that was it. We just, we was all the ones on Jeff City all went down. Yeah, so it's, it's been, yeah.
Do you know if they had demands, like monetary demands? That's what I meant by ransomware, sorry.
That kind of, those kind of investigations can have a weight, there's only a few people that know what's going on, and that's-
Got it.
And they wanna keep it that way.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, all right, sorry Lynn, I didn't mean to leave you out.
One other thing, uh, on the flock cameras, are we covered on south on Clarkson?
Andrew, did you get the direction on all the cameras on Clarkson Road? The directions of traffic that they collect?
Yes.
And north-south?
Um, yeah, they should all be on there on that map.
Yeah, and I, I'm sorry.
They don't have that, but which intersections are we?
Was that updated? You, you updated the map already?
Uh, let's see, so at Clarkson and Curz Mill, uh, let's see, uh, direction of traffic wasn't provided, but the camera was pointed in a northwesterly direction, so presumably that's northbound traffic.
So Chris, would that catch northbound traffic there?
If it was on, sorry, on the-
I'll have to look at it, make sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure which corner it's on, but pointing northwest, it's either getting the traffic heading south towards Curz Mill or traffic heading north away from Curz Mill.
And then there is, um, there's also a camera located at Clarkson, just south of Clayton, basically across from the Clarkson Jewelers. So, and then there's the one at Curz Mill and, or not Curz Mill, Wilson and Clarkson. So we got at least three cameras along there between our southern and northern borders. Which directions they face, I'm not sure, so it's a little-
Turn on Clayton before they got to that camera by the jeweler?
Uh, Clayton does have a couple of cameras on it. I don't recall the location.
It's by the jeweler, yeah.
Well, no, does Clayton Road have any?
Yes. So there's one, like you said, there's one at Clarkson and roughly Clayton at the jeweler, but there's also one on Clayton.
That covers Clarkson.
Yes, there's one on Clayton, uh, as you approach Curz Mill. So if you went down Clarkson Road, made a left on Clayton, as you're approaching Curz Mill, you'd pass another camera, and that captures eastbound traffic on Clayton Road.
Okay, well, eastbound traffic on Clayton, so roughly in the area of Curz Mill and Clarkson. So we'll continue to look at it. I, you know, if it seems advisable, I would still be in favor of closing whatever gaps we have, but if we don't have to buy a whole bunch of them, then, you know, expenditure, it's an expense I would rather not, rather not go to, so.
Sure, of course.
Anyway, okay, so unfinished business. I think we have a resolution, um, twenty-three dash twelve, and this is the ARPA proposal for Dunhill. So I guess I need a motion in a second. Any motions, or no?
I'm just reading for a second.
Yeah.
Checking my, checking my spreadsheet, hold on. I'd like to motion that we pass resolution number twenty-three dash twelve as drafted.
And a second?
A second, yeah.
Michelle, will you, any, uh, well, let me ask, any discussion on that first? No? So Michelle, will you call the roll, please?
I, well, may I borrow your book? Sorry. We didn't make one for Brock.
That's okay.
But he needed it, so, yeah.
It's okay.
All right. Resolution twenty-three twelve, resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Clarkson Valley approving the distribution of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds to the Homeowners Association of Dunhill Farm.
Call for a vote? Discussion? Is there any discussion? Sorry, thank you. Any discussion? Silence? No? Okay, Michelle? Do you, call for the roll?
Yes.
Call the roll?
Oh, call the roll, I'm sorry, good grief, I'm, okay. Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, Hanaa Shalari?
Yes.
Lynn Majad?
Yes.
Jeff Schweig?
Yes.
Andrew Lo?
I have to stand.
And Brock McDonald?
Yes.
Cool. Motion and, or the resolution passes. Thank you very much. Uh, last bit of unfinished business, we have Brock to discuss some solutions that he's drafted for the Forest Hills Ridge parking issue, so go ahead, what, what you wanna talk about?
Sure, so, I mean, Tom did a great job, I mean, sort of explaining the background and all that, but the, um, and one idea that I had had, and then at last meeting, Greg actually, basically came up with the identical recommendation or solution, was just to more or less change the parking situation in the neighborhood as Tom described. Basically let folks do what they want on one side of the street versus, you know, just no parking anytime. The real issue that has never really been addressed is that I don't think people are consistently blocking the street by parking. It's always by stopping. Generally speaking, people don't leave their vehicles, which is when it becomes parking. It's stopping if you're in your vehicle and it's not moving, and it's not going to be moving for a considerable period of time, but you're still in it. So the idea that I had was probably do an ordinance to amend the, the parking or the traffic code, excuse me, for the neighborhood to basically limit any activity whatsoever, parking, stopping, or standing on one side of the street, but allow for free use, if you will, of, of the opposite side of the street, whichever would be most appropriate. Like, like Tom said, the, um, the fire department did a, did an evaluation and didn't have any issues with the possibility of one side of the street being used for actual parking. They seemed to think they could get a, a truck or other emergency vehicle through there without any trouble, with just half of the street being open, so I'd be interested in seeing, you know, an ordinance drafted to embody some of those or all of those ideas. Be interested to hear what other folks think, though.
Anybody else got any input?
I have a question for you guys, and Tom, when you were speaking earlier, you know, I passed that area on my way to the elementary school, and if I remember right, there's no crosswalk. So is the city, by endorsing this practice, are we endorsing, I know they're high schoolers, they're not, they're not seven-
Pedestrian crossing.
But are we, you know, yeah, are we endorsing or encouraging high schoolers walking across Curz Mill Road when there is no crosswalk there? Or is that an option as well to make it safer for them? I'm really, it sounds like you guys did some due diligence with the fire department. I'm really interested to see what Lieutenant over here has to say on their half of it, or if they're willing to do any sort of enforcement or education, let's call it.
From my perspective, we've, we've never really considered a crosswalk. I mean, the problem is tool related, but-
Right.
We haven't ever really approached that.
And it's, it's just kind of a tangential thing, um, not that that would be your, you came here about the parking issue, can I get out of my driveway? But my thought immediately went to, well, should we have high schoolers crossing the street at all?
Can I chime in here? We've been a resident for thirty-something years. I remember when your houses were built, when they opened up the back parking, you know, Marquette, we were all like, oh, please don't do that, they did it. I got a real problem with allowing parking on one side of your street, and I don't care which side it is, because if you allow parking on that side of the street, I guarantee you, you are gonna have cars there all day long. We saw this happen in Dunhill, and they finally, I think, eliminated that. I, I'm, Chris, you can chime in there. I, I really don't wanna see that, because right now it's a fifteen, twenty-minute issue. I think if you allow parking on one side of the street, you're gonna have kids parking there all day long, and it will take about twenty-four hours for that to fly through the school and go, guess what? I don't have to pay for parking, I can sit there all day long. The other thing is, I'm wondering if perhaps we could mitigate what goes on by changing our ordinance to include no parking, standing, or stopping. There's also the possibility of making this a, a double, a double fine zone, especially during school hours, because that would then, you wouldn't have to say only morning, only afternoon, and then what do you do during football games or other activities? And I just was thinking, okay, maybe the first week or two, certainly engage the school and let them know that this is, you know, we're stepping up, we're serious about this. We're tired of the inconvenience it causes you guys, and the danger to the kids who are dashing back and forth across the street. But maybe we ask the police, especially the first couple of weeks or so, can you stop by, put a car in one end of the street, and put a car at the second end of the street, and just go down the line, here's your ticket, here's your ticket, here's your ticket. Those could be warnings, maybe the first few weeks, and after whatever date, here's your fine, and it's twice what everybody else has to pay under normal circumstances.
Clearly, as we discussed, the, the lack of enforcement is, no offense intended, but people just do what they want.
Yeah.
Now, the one, one thing with leaving it, no parking on both sides forever, there are occasions where that's a hindrance to the residents.
Sure.
When people have parties and so forth, how, how do we make exceptions for that?
Could it be guests or residents?
Guests, yeah, and, and I would think, um, you know, as a resident, maybe we could issue little hangers or something, 'cause you guys got cleaners, home cleaners, you have baby showers, you have, like you said, resident, but-
So to have something that, if we're gonna enforce it, but then protect us.
Right, but one thing would be, one thing would be if these signs, if this was identified as during school functions or school hours, just like the, the lights that, you know, you go through on Curz Mill, Curz Mill Elementary, your fines are doubled when those lights are flashing if you, if you go through them. I don't know, I'm just throwing things out there, but I just know if you take, if you allow parking on that one side of the street, they're gonna be there all day long, it's gonna take about-
I hadn't, hadn't really considered that.
Couple hours to figure that out. Even if, if you paint the, the curb yellow, I don't see that as being any more effective than the signs. But I do think we could maybe hammer down a little on the, on the restrictions. I would like to think that if the police came through and they saw a lawn truck, you know, with lawn equipment there, they'd go, yeah, okay, that's not somebody parking there, it's there for a couple hours to do whatever, let it go. But I don't know, Chris, is that possible?
That's all well and good until somebody who's received the citation brings that to the forefront and says they will universally enforce it, select it, enforce it, and that's gonna get in trouble.
Okay.
So, and, and as you know, Mayor, this has come up several times throughout the years. It's been discussed by the council and toll boards, and, and it's just always kinda, the, the resolution to this is difficult because of all the different variables that are involved, you know, the residents and kids and all that kind of stuff, and we've never really come to any little agreement on what's the best thing to do, except to keep the ordinance as it is now. And it does, the signs that appear do say no standing.
Says no standing or parking.
Stopping.
That's, I don't believe that's, is that true? I didn't realize it said the word stopping on it.
Well, not all of them, I just wanted to say, no stopping, no parking, any time, pedestrian crossing, whatever. There's, there's three signs, there's three signs that say no stopping or parking.
Can you make it permanent only?
Yeah, I was wondering, that's what it was, what the word.
Well, then that would be an HOA thing, right, because it's private street?
Yeah, that, that we could have X number of permits that we issued for grass cutting people and when you have parties and whatnot, that could be, again, easily regulated. There's only six houses.
Yeah, there's no, um, there's one sign at the Clarkson end of your subdivision, and it's got the P with the cross through it, and it's no stopping or standing in an arrow. Then there's another one that's no stopping or parking anytime, pedestrian, pedestrian crossing prohibited, and I think somebody pulled up that picture.
It was on the island?
Yeah.
Basin School.
And then there's another one that says no parking or standing. I think if nothing else, we should make the signs all consistent.
So I guess, sort of a new, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Tom, but if, with the city code specifying that the signs say no parking, are the signs that say no stopping even enforceable, 'cause it, it's not in the traffic code?
Yeah, we'd probably clean it up with it, if it said, what the signs say.
Yeah, yeah.
Just on inference there.
Yeah.
And, I mean, you know, whoever it was that showed that sign, the, the pedestrian crossing prohibited is difficult to read at best, so it needs to be replaced. But, um, yeah, I, I would, I would be very much in favor of replacing those signs, changing the ordinance to read something more consistent, and having the signage reflect that. But I really just don't see that allowing parking on one side of the street is gonna be a solution for you.
If we could, if we could include permits, I think that solves.
Yeah, I, I-
I guess the only thing I caution of that is, say you've got six houses, maybe we give each house, you give each house, sorry, the HOA would give each house like four, four guest permits or whatever, for lawn cutting folks or whomever. Trouble is, even if you have the same lawn coming, coming, there's no guarantee the same truck's coming every day, and there's no way they're gonna remember to bring their permits, nor do they care to bring their permits. So it's, I like the idea, it's probably the way to go, but there's gonna be some people that are not gonna have them when they ought to have them, and that's their fault, not yours, but.
How, how viable is the, um, the solution that we just mentioned, where Chris is concerned about arbitrary application? How, how viable is the solution that we just mentioned, where Chris is concerned about arbitrary application?
Well, it sounds like the real, well, not, the bulk of the problem is Monday through Friday for about a half hour. Three to three-thirty.
What about football games?
Well, I'm-
Sorry?
There was about four home games, the varsity home games.
One of the issues that I know.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know if the police ever did like a three-week enforcement program. And how did it-
They were there at the beginning of school for like three weeks.
And how was it?
And we were stacked, well, you know, as you can imagine, in the beginning, we were walking up to everybody in the mornings, and what we were doing, and then it got on, and all went away, and then we were not there anymore, and slowly started creeping back.
People caught on, and they came back.
They are, so, but, you know, again, it's for that half hour of time every day, and, you know.
You mean, it would be, make sense to mix it up like-
It would require a police car to sit there every day and make sure that this doesn't happen, and, and we take our direction from you, so.
How effective would it be if you just had somebody there, who knows what days you're gonna be there, you know?
Yeah, I was gonna say like two days a week or something.
Random.
You don't ever have, we're not here from sunset, you know.
Yeah, I know, but if you're there, like you said, if they're, if you guys are there for several weeks, and then there's a period of time where they go, oh, they're not here, what about, you know, you just, every, you know, maybe this week on Monday, this week on Tuesday, this week on whatever, but you do different days and stagger the weeks even. I just nail them.
It's almost very possible.
I think at some point, the message, when you start giving out real tickets, real citations, that's gonna have a ripple effect.
What about, and again, what about increasing the fine in that area during certain times? Is that feasible, Pat, can we do something?
If you change your ordinance, you can. If you can't do it now, you have to change the-
No, 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 yeah, I know, but that's, if we're gonna change the ordinance to read, you know, parking, standing, or stopping, or, or reflect the signs, what the signs say, make that consistent, then, you know, we could perhaps do that. I don't know, anybody got any thoughts there? Objections? Lynn?
Are there any no pedestrian crossing signs on the Marquette side?
Um, there are-
On the Marquette side of this, of Curs-
Are there any?
Oh, no, no, on the school side, no. These are, all the pedestrian crossing prohibited signs are on the, the Forest Hills Ridge side. They're opposite the school. I'm sorry?
Could you put some on the other side, so they wouldn't know?
I think they would take the suggestion more than anything, but-
I still can't-
Yeah, yeah.
Even, because there are probably fifteen of them that cross that aren't going to cars, they're going
Up the wall.
Three yards, over into-
Forest Hills. Jenny Cliff. Yeah, that's an easy, easy trot home to Jenny Cliff if you live on that side.
And Nora, I saw you had your hand up. It was a long time ago, but-
Yeah, it was a long time ago, I was just gonna say, because in Forest Hills, the people said, oh, they're our guests. Remember that, on Jenny Cliff, and so they can park there, the kids, it's from the school. They had a lot of guests.
Very recently, we revisited that and said the same thing, well, you're friends of our kids, they meet and walk us through.
Yeah.
Well, if it's not a nuisance for them, you know, then there's-
Well, it was a nuisance for the people across the street.
Well, there was, they were a bit challenged in with, like, other parts like that, especially.
So, anyway, those are, those are my thoughts. Anybody got any others or solutions, or we can kinda throw it around for the next month?
Should we put for, except by permit only, on a sign? If you're going to allow some people to do it with permits, maybe we should put by permit only or something. I don't know.
Well, that's, I think, when we need Patrick and Lieutenant Connolly to chime in, because where does the city line end and the HOA line?
Well, that's, yeah, that's what's me, exactly what's in my brain, is who issues the permit? If, if the HOA issues a permit, that's not governmental action. If we issue permits, they gotta come to City Hall and, and, and get so many per household.
Where, where does it, how does it play out that we've decided the authorization? Does that give us any rights to issue permits and-
No, you just said that they can do their job on your streets.
But I guess if, if we issue the permit, like, could we work out the program with the neighborhoods? The number of permits available per house, your residents come up to City Hall and we issue them. Would that suffice? It's not like you go to Tom's house to get your permit, but they come here and it would be kind of a collaboration type thing.
Okay, we, we have, we have no parking signs that we issue for events at, at private homes. What about if we also have signs that, especially if people are gonna have a gathering, temporary parking allowed, which they could put up whenever? Would that be something? City of Clarkson Valley, you know-
We could do that, those signs are advisory in the end, I, I mean, it's just not-
But how likely would it be that, you know, if somebody parks on the street there, would the police, would you all come by and ticket that vehicle if it was parked next to a sign that said temporary parking allowed, City of Clarkson Valley?
Do the ordinance back it up? Yes. But it would specifically, have to specifically, why would I just do that? Yeah, that's the whole thing, we can only act based on what each ordinance gives us, this ordinance do. And we can do about anything, but the bottom line is, we don't do, we don't, this is the court, so.
Well, so in-
And also, in terms of correction on law, if you're gonna do the permit, then that's gonna have to be an ordinance to do.
Right, that's correct, and that procedure, we're gonna have to, you know, do a new procedure. How do you do it?
What about just in this next month or two, just have some squad cars just randomly show up and, you know, start issuing warnings again?
Well, we know what's happening, you know, we can do it from three to three.
Yeah. You know, if you guys could agree to do that at least one day a week, you know, to, or a couple of days a week at first, and then back off a little bit, nobody ever, nobody's ever gonna know when you show up.
If you can get through the street.
Well, that'd be easy, you just go down and go, here's, 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 here's.
Have to start at the front, we have to unload from the front of the neighborhood.
And then here's will be parked. So we could send that picture to them, and then park them on my driveway. Give you good to test.
Exactly, I was about to say.
I guarantee as soon as a squad car pulls in, you're gonna rant out of a sinking ship.
Once they announce a deal-
I was gonna say, once, if they even see, you know, when you're officers, with a piece of paper in their hand, they might start running immediately.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking, if you guys show up, you bring two cars, block one end of the street, the other end of the street, and then-
Nah, you can't do that.
Did we also notify the school to announce that they shouldn't?
I know we did in the past, and I think-
Because I, I'm wondering, at the same time, we, whatever we do, do, do signage and make it brighter, be in neon color, if that's allowed or something.
I would have to research it, but I think maybe very well, do you need a back, back, a white background with red or, I mean, with-
Required by law to, yeah. Well, yeah, and to your point, Nora, I know, at one point, it was addressed at the school, and it was effective. But again, it was only while it was being enforced, so you can tell the school, and the school will tell the parents, but if nobody shows up to-
I think you both.
Right, but if nobody shows up to, you know, do something about the cars that are there, then they're gonna go, well, you know, no big deal. But yeah, telling the school, I think, would, would be essential. So, anyway, we'll tell the school, and if you guys could start showing up randomly, let's see how that works. And maybe it'll help, I, maybe it won't, but in the meantime, we need to redo signs and probably modify the existing ones.
And I was thinking of a sign, just like when you go through the school, like, on the highway, dime fines doubled when workers present, and put on a sign that parking fines doubled during these hours.
Schools, school hours, schools in session or whatever.
School events.
Yeah, school events, Monday through Friday.
Have you ever seen problems during school events? We get an occasional person dropping off or picking up at, like, football games and other stuff, but that, it's really just right after school. So it's not for basically, and, and my knowledge has never caused this issue.
Well, let's look at the fines doubled during school hours and, and new signs, and have them consistent in their message. And you guys start showing up on occasion, and we'll contact the school as well, and let them know that, you know, this is not, we're tired, these folks are tired of dealing with that. So, okay. Thank you, Brock, thank you, Tom. Okay, one thing I did wanna mention, Tom mentioned the possibility, especially, and it would be especially effective on their nice old tidy small subdivision of putting, putting gates up on those, on that entrance and exit on both ends of the street. Problem is, one, not only is it expensive, but it also definitely defines them as a private street, and there you go with your snow removal, and, you know, we're gonna be out of luck on that. So, anyway, okay, new business. We have Resolution twenty-three thirteen, it's the ARPA proposal for Forest Hills, Forest Hills Ridge. So, do I have a motion in the second to, for this, for this resolution? Sorry.
I make a motion, twenty-three thirteen.
Second?
I second that.
Any discussion? Nope?
I'll read it.
Yes, please.
Resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Clarkson Valley approving the distribution of ARPA, which is American Rescue Plan Act, funds to the Homeowner Association of Forest Hills Ridge. No, your resolutions stink enough.
All right, so if you would please, Michelle, call for a vote. And Nora Schiller, yes, Jeff Schwag?
Yes.
Andrew, I'm sorry, yeah, Andrew Lo?
Abstain.
And Brock McDonald?
Yes.
And Lynn?
Lynn.
Oh, Lynn, thank you.
Yes.
I'm not the only one that forgot you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Lynn. You're much more fun here in person. Okay, the resolution for Forest Hills Ridge passes.
Yay, Tom.
Yay. Resolution number twenty-three fourteen, the ARPA proposal for Kings Point. Everybody happy now? Anyone want to make a motion in a second, please?
I make the motion.
A second? Thank you, Lynn. Uh, any discussion? Nope. Michelle, will you please read the, uh, resolution?
Twenty-three fifteen, resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Clarkson Valley approving the distribution of ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act funds to the Homeowners Association of Curswood.
I thought we were doing Kings Point.
Oh, Kings Point, Kings Point, yeah. Curswood's next.
Ah, dear, dear, dear. Oh, dear, I do apologize. Resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Clarkson Valley approving the distribution of American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds, to the Homeowners Association of Kings Point.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn.
You're welcome.
All right, Michelle, will you please call the roll? Andrew Lo?
Abstain.
Jeff Schwag?
Yes.
Lynn Majet?
Yes.
And Nora Schiller?
Yes.
Brock McDonald?
Yes.
Yay, okay. Forest Hills, or Forest Hills Ridge and Kings Point, Tom, it was a good night for you, sort of, TBD. The next resolution, twenty-three fifteen, that would be the Curswood ARPA proposal. Michelle, would you please read the resolution?
Any motion for it?
I'm sorry, you do, yes. Would you-
Michael Hood, approve twenty-three fifteen, Curswood.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Nope. Michelle, will you now read, please?
Resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Clarkson Valley approving the distribution of American, excuse me, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds, to the Homeowners Association of Curswood.
Call the roll, please. Jeff Schwag?
Yes.
And Nora Scheller?
Yes.
Brock McDonald?
Yes.
Lynn Majet?
Yes.
And Andrew Lo?
Abstain.
Motion passes, or resolution passes, thank you. The last one is Forest Hills Country Club, or Forest Hills Club Estates. And I'm not certain of the number on that one, would that be twenty-three sixteen? It is, okay. Twenty-three, Resolution twenty-three sixteen, the ARPA proposal for Forest Hills Club Estates. Do I have a motion in a second?
Twenty-three sixteen for Forest Hills Estates.
Seconded.
Was it, I'm sorry, oh, Brock?
It was Brock.
Okay, thank you, Brock. Any discussion?
I was wondering, do the homeowners like this plan for the creek?
We haven't gone to homeowners in general to go-
No, I meant the two homeowners that live next to the creek.
Everyone has complained to you. But the real issue is not just, is not the aesthetics of the creek, it's the integrity of the creek banks, so.
I was just wondering if the plan for it has been discussed with them, because Dunhill really was upset with theirs after it was done by MSD. And a lot of, you know, the house was gonna fall into the creek, but they took out all the trees, they put in this rock that, you know, right at the edge of the yard, that their kids couldn't run to play, you'd run into the rocks, because they took out the trees to limit where the, where it started. And, you know, when we, we look across the creek that they did it, the country club, they planted stuff, it really does not look good.
Well, so, two things, first of all, there is common ground on both sides of the creek. So, as far as kids running up, I mean, it is common ground by the HOA. And secondly, in, in terms of how the creek looks right now for the club, there's a three-year period of planting that happens along that creek. So what you've got now is that first year, that's why I understand that they blanketed it, and the plants are underneath it to, to, to kill and continue to kill the, honey, something, everything else that comes through. And then these, there's more of an ecological approach instead of rocking it, that these plants will be then merged through over this three-year period, and, and get established to help control all of the extra growth and, and, and maintain that creek, the creek banks.
I know the creek is common, but like at Dunhill, the house that is next to the creek, if the kids are playing in the yard, to know where the creek, you know, where the rocks are gonna fall right off, you know, if you go running.
But it's not any different than it is now, as far as playing next to the creek. I mean, there's, there isn't any difference.
Well, I think it would be nice if they knew how it was going to end up, you know, what it was actually going to look like. And you said also the north entrance, the north entrance is where they made the mistake. I thought they were going to cover the people that made the mistake.
But, so, like, the plan is on the north entrance is to fill where it is, the, the concrete is starting to deteriorate. We're gonna fill that, which wasn't done at the south entrance, so we'll fill it to, to extend the life of that concrete. So that's preempting, you know, any full replacement. We never plan to fully replace the north entrance. But there, there is some, there are few areas that, that need- entrance, but there, there is some, there are few areas that, that need to be addressed.
Okay, 'cause I thought they were going to cover it since they had made the mistake.
They, they took care of what they messed up. They did.
Anything else? From anyone else? Brock, do you have anything?
No, I, um, it came in, um, pretty close to the meeting, but I reviewed their package and have all the bids, we have all the insurance, business licenses, even bondability letters, which not all contractors are able to send us, so it's, it's one of the best packages I've seen, so.
Lynn, as, as a Ward Three rep, do you have any comments, questions? Since Forest Hills straddles both wards.
No, I, I have a little difficult time hearing what was said, but, uh, no, I don't have any comment on it. I'm pleased to see that they've got it in, and hope it all goes well.
Okay, so at this point, I believe we can take a vote, correct? Do we have any questions?
Yeah, no, the repairs are in Ward Three, they're not in Ward Two.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
All right, so, um, Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Sure, I'd love to. Um, Jeff Schwag?
Yes.
Honora Scheller?
I'm hesitant, just because I don't know what it's gonna look like when it's done, but I guess we'll give them the money and hopefully they do it correctly.
So, yes?
Yes, I said we'll give them money, hopefully.
Lynn Majet?
Yes.
And Brock McDonald?
Yes.
And Andrew Lowe?
Abstain.
Okay. Resolution passes. There you go, Forest Hills. Thank you for getting that stuff in. Okay, the last one is Bill zero-five-three-five, and this regard, this is regarding texting while driving, and this is a statewide mandate. Um, Missouri was one of the last two, I believe, states to prohibit texting while driving without any, um, age, um, allowance. Now it is, no matter how old you are, you cannot text and drive, and this is a state motion, so essentially we don't have a whole lot of option, we just say, okay. So, um, I'd like a motion in the second to, uh, adopt Bill number zero-five-three-five, texting while, against tech, prohibiting texting while driving. Have a motion in the second?
Motion to approve Bill zero-five-three-five.
Second?
Second.
Uh, we need, uh, any discussion?
May I read that? Yes, please. Okay. An ordinance amending the municipal, the municipal code of the City of Clarkson Valley, Missouri in Title III Traffic Code, Chapter three forty miscellaneous driving rules by removing age limitations in Section three forty point two-five-oh, Paragraph A. The lieutenant could add to this, but this is not enforceable by ticket until twenty-twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and it's not a first offense pull over.
I just read the process and I was gonna like, ah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And it will be, it would be, I don't know.
If, if I'm memory searching correctly, it's not, you can't pull someone over because you see them texting while driving, don't you have to pull them over for another reason first, or is that?
I don't think that's the case with this.
Okay, okay, good, good, okay.
Okay, that is good.
All right, um, Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Oh, second reading.
I'm sorry, second reading, I'm sorry, it's a bill, I forgot.
An ordinance amending the municipal code of the City of Clarkson Valley, Missouri in Title III Traffic Code, Chapter three forty miscellaneous driving rules by removing age limitations in Section three forty point two-five-oh, Paragraph A.
Okay, now can we call it in? Now can we call it in, please? Thank you, thank you. Brock McDonald?
Yes.
Andrew Lowe?
Yes.
Jeff Schwag?
Yes.
Lynn Majet?
Yes.
And Honora Scheller?
Yes.
Okay, Bill zero-five-three-five passes.
Yeah.
I get to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, the audit. I need, um, a motion in a second to accept the audit as it stands.
Motion to approve the audit as stated in amendments.
Lynn? Then motion, motion been made and seconded, um-
Discussion.
Any questions? Any discussion, any questions regarding the audit? Anybody?
Okay.
Can I say something about the computers? Um, the, the computer bill finally came in, it just came in, and it was two thousand ten dollars, and the, the tech, um, committee estimated, or, or really thought it would be like twenty, what was it, twenty, uh, two thousand eighty-eight or something. So it actually came under, we got a much better computer, and, um, I'm just so happy with it, I'm really pleased, I can't thank you enough.
I can't believe the deal they gave us on the service plans. There's no way they're making money on that.
No. No, we got a three-year service plan too, within this, two thousand dollars, two computers, top of the line.
For like seventy-five bucks, so.
Yeah, and I, I was remiss earlier, I do wanna add, um, how much we, how grateful we are for all the work you guys, you and Andrew, Brock, have put in. I know lots of long hours, Brock was here on a Saturday, starting the setup, on, on many Saturdays, um, lots of nights. You guys have been just a huge help, so we're, we're very much appreciative of all the work you've put in. So thank you very much. Um, we may have to share a beverage at some point in that. Okay, um, I guess the voice vote to accept the, the audit as it stands, ayes and nays? Ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Audit is, um, accepted as it stands. Uh, miscellaneous, do we have anything miscellaneous that anybody wants to discuss? I think we've pretty much beaten that dead horse. Um, closed meetings unnecessary, so I motion a second to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second! Yeah, he's second, second, second. Who's second? Oh, he did. Oh, Jeff.
Jeff.
All right, meeting is adjourned. Oh, ayes and nays, I gotta have a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Yay.
I missed that one.
All right, motion, uh, meeting is adjourned. Oh, boy.
Take your own safe, Sam.